Common values. Common goals. Common sense. The Common Sense Podcast with Semi Bird.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to Common Sense with Semi Bird. I'm Semi Bird, your host. And joining me today is my dear friend, Gabe Galbraith. Gabe has served as the president of the Kennewick School Board. And just to be very clear for everyone who's listening in, Gabe is not here in an official capacity. He's here as a citizen, as a friend to the podcast and my dear and personal friend for many years. And Gabe has been around the education system for a while now and has a lot of insight. He understands what's going on in our schools, our school districts. He understands what's going on with the Washington State School Directors Association, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, and so much more. And as our children are returning to school, what better time than to have someone who's knowledgeable on all things? Oh, I want to say that all things, not even that all things, but someone who has a good perspective and a fair and objective perspective and on education. And so joining me is my dear friend, Gabe. Gabe, welcome to the show, brother. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time. Gabe, I want to start out by just asking you, why? What motivated you or inspired you to run to be a school board director in your community?
Yeah, thanks, Semi. I'm excited to be here. So appreciate the invite. I think like most people back in COVID, I think that kind of woke everybody up, right? And I was very frustrated with the school district and the response to COVID. At the time, I had three kids in the school district. My wife teaches in the school district. And so I was just, I was frustrated like a lot of people. And one day I told someone, I'm going to run for school director, just kind of as a joke. And then all of a sudden it came time and they said, hey, are you still going to do it? And I thought, oh, man, better put my money where my mouth is. And I did. And I wanted to make things better for, of course, my kids and my wife and my community and the school district that I graduated from. I mean, I'm a, I went through all the schools and graduated from the district. And so I just wanted to do something and make a change and be a voice for, for people that may not have one.
And that's what it's about. I mean, that's really, so our school districts are there to serve the community. Not just our, you know, people say, well, education systems are for our children, and that's 100% correct. But there's that family component as well. And getting families to participate and who pays the taxes and pays for, for funding schools and school programs. And I think we do better as an academic system when you have that family participation and engagement. And what's the ultimate? To actually either serve as a teacher, as a, as an administrator, as an instructor, as a coach, but getting involved. But here you are, you know, in a non-political position, by the way, to serve as a school director. And you've done some remarkable things. I can say that I would have been one of those individuals and have been one of your greatest fans and advocates. But your courage just to take some stands in difficult positions. And I'm going to jump in for our housekeeping things. So folks, we are live on Instagram, on TikTok, YouTube, Rumble, Facebook. And so if you have questions, I've got a screen up here to my left and I see some folks who have tuned in. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We're going to look for your questions in a minute. We're going to give you time to join us and warm up. And if you have questions for Gabe or myself on any topic, we're here to talk about education, but on any topic, once we get going, please feel free to jump in. But yeah, Gabe, I mean, you put, you put up. I mean, you stepped up and, and that's a big deal. One of the things I noticed right off the bat was you guys took a very difficult stance on, well, critical race theory. And this is at a time where it was very much politicized. And you guys said, look, in my interpretation, you were more focused on education and seeing this as possibly a distraction. What motivated you and your teammates to move forward the way you did? And can you please explain it to our viewers? What did you do?
Yeah. So great question. So critical race theory at the time was a big nationwide issue, right? Everybody was talking about it. And one of the things we weren't doing as a district is we were not telling our community where we stood with critical race theory, right? It's simple. The community just wants to know that we have their back and we're sharing those same values. And so that was one of the things that I ran on was that we were going to remove critical race theory from the schools. Of course, everybody says it's not there. Okay, great. I'm not going to argue with you about it. But at the end of the day, we need to do something to show that it's not there, right? And so rather than do a resolution, we decided to do a policy because a policy has teeth, right? That's where the accountability is at. And so we got together as a board and decided we were going to sit down, go through a study session, list out all these things that we did not want taught within our school. You know, teaching kids that, you know, skin color matters or they're oppressors or all this stuff that you get with critical race theory. And we ironed those out as a group. And I think that was a really productive way that we went about it. Because everybody at the time was able to, to say and share how they felt and what they thought. And we put that all together and we passed a policy five, five zero unanimous. And that's, I think, kind of been the example for other districts to take if they want to, right? Some districts will take it. A lot of districts won't because.
It was. I mean, and it was. And you were for the Richland School District, I know. I was on the board at the time. And, and we took the ball and ran with it as well and we got it passed. But you said something really, well, wonderful, that all the school boards members came together on this. And not everyone agreed at that time on the same topics all the time. I mean, some of the board members were more often than not at odds with one another. But in this, however that discussion went down, you guys managed to come together to say, we're not going to bring this into our schools. Others said it was never there. Well, that's good. Then now we have a policy that said, well, if it should ever come in, well, then now we say that, well, it's not allowed. Right. Kids, if you're a white child, you're never going to feel or be told that you're somehow an oppressor or part of a lineage, or you're not going to wear that shame or blame for something that happened hundreds of years ago, right? Or if you're a child of color, there's no reason to feel that the color of your skin limits your ability in life. We're not going to bring that stuff into our schools. We're going to focus on academic excellence.
Right. And, and you know, we, again, we had what I felt were some examples that things were being worked around, right? For instance, we had some teachers reading Ibram X. Kendi's books, right, in a book club. And it's like, okay, well, if you're reading those books, those are going to give you some of these ideas, right? That he's wants, you know, people to have. And, and so regardless of it being taught or not, we wanted to make sure the community knew we're not going to teach it.
Yes.
And where, where we stood and hey, guess what? If it is taught, there's some accountability now to that. Because oftentimes you can say and do all this stuff, but if there's no accountability, then it's, it's pointless, right?
A hundred percent. And you said it, a resolution, that sounds good, but a resolution has no teeth. You cannot enforce a resolution. If you have a policy, a policy is enforceable. Even if you're a member of the union, a policy is enforceable. So being a member of the union doesn't exclude you from obeying the rules. And we have, as you know, many amazing school teachers, right? Amazing administrators who, who want to do what's right for our children and our families. And so we're just giving them that left and right limit to follow. And I think it's important for, for families to know that just because it's not on the curriculum, it does not mean it's not being brought into the classroom. Because you have what, what they would call supplemental education materials that are often brought into the classroom. And it's nothing that clears the board or clears the administration. Is that correct?
That is correct. And actually, we've, we've been a big proponent of that in our district where we're, we are ensuring that supplemental materials come before the board so we can actually look at that. And that's a, that's a great point when, when you talk about curriculum. And one of the things that I focused on particularly is curriculum is often, it goes through a pipeline, right? So goes through a committee and then they're the ones who look through it all and then they recommend it to the board. And where does that recommendation come? It just comes in consent agenda items. It's a line on the consent, right? So then you immediately start the meeting and everyone votes on the consent. Yep, 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 yep. Because it's got payroll, everything in it. And so who's really, who's really checking that work that's being done? And so one, one thing that I tell school directors all the time is when you have curriculum that comes through, go pull it up, go Google search it, go, go do a little research so you feel comfortable with it, right? Because I can tell you, within the first three months that I was on the board, we had a book come through and I punch it in, I start doing some research and all of a sudden, one chapter is on rape, unfortunately, for a high school book. And I'm like, we, we don't need this book in the class where someone's talking about this. Like, what if there's kids that have dealt with this or their parents? Or what is the purpose of this, this book to be in the class, right? So we pull it off, we don't approve it, it goes back on the shelf somewhere and we're on to the next one, right? So those are the things where you need active and vigilant school board directors that are willing to just spend a little bit of time and do some research. Because you know, curriculum is, is critical in our schools. And if people are just saying, yep, we trust the committee, well, who's on the committee?
That's exactly it. So that's exactly it. And, and there's a lot of parents out there who, well, obviously, you know, primary stakeholders.
Right.
And those children's, not just their education, but their upbringing. And so certainly their education. But parents, if you're not getting involved, if you're not getting engaged to, to look at and to hold your school board directors accountable, well, then you will get what you get. And because we put our heads in the sand, comprehensive sex education, LGBTQ AI plus, and boy, don't even get on the plus of what, what has entailed in that. And we'll talk about a few things. I'm going to take a look, Gabe, to the left, just to see what questions we have. If there's any questions, we have people that are, that are logged on right now. And again, folks who are, who are on, welcome. Folks are saying, yes, transparency matters 100%. Curriculum transparency matters 100%. And, and so again, you reap what you sow. If you're not willing to self-govern, as we say, get involved, get engaged, attend those school board meetings, look at the agendas, ask those questions. What are you approving? I mean, have we seen that consent agenda? Because you tuck it all in there under approved curriculum and you don't look to see what is in there, then.
You're just getting the titles, right? That's all you're getting. You don't know what's in there. You don't get, and I'm assuming this is probably the same for most districts. You don't get the committee notes on all the, the stuff they're approving, right? Again, it's a sheet of paper. It has the title on it. And so for most folks and the folks listening, right? Your school boards are getting these packets in advance. They should be posted online. You can go pull this packet and say, okay, this is what the board's doing. And if you have questions, reach out, right? And I think prior, prior to COVID, I think a lot of us just felt, oh, the schools are doing great. You know, my kid loves it. And we just let it run way too far unchecked. And, and that it's, it's woken up a lot of folks to take action and either join a board or be vocal at meetings. And, and that's what it's going to take to bring it back in, in line.
A hundred percent. And thank goodness for that. And that was one of those parents. I mean, we live in a community where we have probably the largest PhD population per capita, right? We, we have a higher, you know, income per, per capita. So lower crime rate. I mean, it's, it's, we don't have as many Title IX schools or impoverished schools in, in our community than different communities throughout Washington. But boy, was I surprised and shocked what was happening in our schools. And I want to say one thing, I want to break from the discussion, just to remind anybody paying attention. Think about this and look up Piaget's Theory of Cognitive Development. This is from a child's birth as they're advancing through their, their, their life. That those early years where a child's brain is developing, right? As a child is forming their cognition, they are influenced by their environment from beginning with their parents, then to those next adults. And then now they're in school from preschool to grade school to middle school to high school. So they're, they're not just being developed within the house. They're being developed outside of the house.
Yeah. And almost as much or more, right? Because how long, how long, you know, are kids in school or at sporting activity? Like they're, they're a lot. So once they hit that age and they start school, that's the adult they're going to be around a lot.
That's it. That's it. So you guys did something else. I mean, we're going to talk about more things besides controversy. Some of the great things you guys did. But recently, recently, you guys, I mean, you were on Fox News. You know, you were, you were on Fox News and it was about, I believe, the new state law that went into effect. Was, was that about the new state, state law, the LGBTQ curriculum? Was that? Or tell me about it.
Yeah. So, so that's one piece. I was on, I did a thing on Fox News recently for the new Title IX changes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Harris Biden administration and that came into effect. Obviously, Washington State's not going to be a state that sues them. So, so that took effect. But we, as a board, came, came out and did a resolution, right? Just to tell the community, we, we don't agree with, you know, boys and girls sports, right? Because we just had a, a track athlete who won the state title. Obviously, odds on favorite to win it again next year when, when they come back. And so we came out to the community and said, look, we don't agree with this. We want our, you know, our girls protected. And, and so we shared that with, with the community. Because I, I think oftentimes what happens is we don't tell the community enough, right? And I, and I was there. I was a frustrated father, not hearing anything from the community. And that, that was a big part of also what I want to do and ensure from, from my board perspective is that we're transparent and open with the community. So we came out and put a resolution out there that said, we don't support it. It's tough because there's the law that allows it. And so what are we doing about it? Well, we have to work within that law. But we also can go to the WIAA and, and lobby for things. We can get on other board directors and say, hey, help us, like the more the merrier, right? The more of us together. And so we can do those things. And so, but yeah, so I think again, that was, that was a win for us to say, look, we don't, we don't support this and we're going to do everything we can to protect our daughters as they, as they play sports. And as a father of two daughters who play sports and, and I, you know, that's, I don't want them getting hurt because a mediocre boy who comes out and is now the, the best player on the field.
A hundred percent. And, and I like the way you, you worded it. It's to protect your, your daughters. And, and as a father of, of all daughters, right? All girls. It's, you know, Title, Title IX of the Civil Rights Act. It was, you know, protecting women's rights was, it was a huge, right?
Right.
And, and it's almost like now we're violating women's rights in a sense of these young female athletes, they work so hard. And, and I know, because I know your girls. And, and you know, warrior princesses both, just very, very competitive, very athletic and hardworking, non-stop. I mean, one a days, two a days, three a days. And I did, I did say one a days, but that, that is the lighter of the days. But just non-stop trying to perfect their abilities, to maximize their abilities, to be able to perform in their sport. And then for someone to come in because they choose to identify a certain way and say, well, okay. So because you say it, so that's just the way it is. And then it could be that, you know, one of our daughters could be harmed, right? Because of that muscle mass and strength, right? But, but certainly, but their future scholarships. It's, we talk about accessibility. We talk about, it's almost you're reversing reverse equity, reverse.
Yeah, yeah. And so you think about, you think about the, the track athlete that took second. This, this young lady who's put in all this work, worked hard her whole life.
Yes.
And then now you have a boy come, comes in who just says, identifies female and wins the race and wins. And so now this young lady is not a state champion.
Yeah.
She's a state runner-up, right? And that could happen again next year. So where's the line when you talk about a scholarship? Now you got a two-time state runner-up versus a two-time state champion.
Absolutely.
Depending, you know, that, that's a whole, a whole different thing. And, and that's on top of that. Now, now you factor in locker rooms and that whole dynamic and that, that's just, it's so, it's so scary to me.
It is. And we've crossed so many lines. And it's careful that people understand, we're, we're not taking a position against anyone.
Correct.
We're taking a position for someone, for advocating for women's rights, for the protections. You know, no one talks about it, about, you know, women going into young men's locker rooms, right? But, but to protect them, you know, they could be shy and say, I don't want, you know, you know, especially at a younger age. I mean, it goes both ways, but certainly there is a delineation, right? And so, yeah, not to, to chase that rabbit too far down the whole way. But it's not taking a position against, it's in protection of.
Correct.
I think it's important. I'm just going to take a look over to the left. We have some folks that are on. I just want to make sure. And guys, if you're going to bring a question, please make sure you, you make sure I could see it in my senior years with a lot of question marks. And so let's see, we have, bum, 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 just looking. Let's see. Can parents still come into their high school students' class? Yep. And observe what their teachers are telling their children in their classes? And so I, I believe the law still allows that to happen. And accessibility or access will, you know, depend on the policies of the individual school districts, Gabe. What say?
Yeah. So you, you can do that. And again, it's going to be based on policy, what, what the district has. I would, I would say it's safe to say that there's going to be a notice period, probably 24 hours. And that unfortunately, like for me, I would say, hey, you should be able to go in, you know, call the principal and say, hey, I'm going to swing in and go in and do it, right?
Yeah.
That's not how union contracts work.
Yeah.
And, and that stuff gets bargained. And so we're, we're kind of beholden to that. But it's a balance too, right? You want to make sure you're not disrupting class, but you want to make sure what's being taught is taught. But you can also request curriculums and all that stuff too.
So there's a lot of other ways to get involved. And so, and that was Joel. And Joel, thank you for your question.
Thank you.
And, and I think it's, it's a big deal because statistically, when parents are involved in their children's education, children academically perform better.
Right.
Statistically, in almost every single study. And so having parental involvement is a positive. And that transparency from the educator is a good indicator to that parent that, hey, come on in and, and help out.
Yeah.
Especially in the, in the younger years. Boy, I imagine our educators could use the support.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Be, be a part of the program, right? And be, be a part of the program. Help us out.
I would say that's a big, I would say as a parent, that's a big deal to build that relationship with, with that teacher the best you can, right? Because you, you want to have a good working relationship, make sure your, your child is getting the, their needs taken care of and learning and those things, right? And, and if you do that and you build that trust, I think that, that really goes a long way to, to understanding what's, what's being taught in the class. And I will say something that you mentioned earlier, and I wholeheartedly believe this. There are so many phenomenal teachers out there. So many. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent are just fantastic. It's just, you, you have the few that push the boundaries a little too far and, and, and you gotta, you gotta bring them back in. But most teachers want to show up and teach your kids and love your kids and help them grow and be, be a mentor. And I, I look at my beautiful wife.
Yes.
And, and I've been in her class a ton and I see the interactions and I'm like, man, this is, this is great, right? And that's what a lot of teachers do.
Hundred percent. And I mean, just to think to go into that profession, their, their hearts are in the right place. And we have to be careful that we're not bringing that shade wrongfully. We may not agree with the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Right.
Right?
Right.
We may not agree with the principal or this or that. But, but we have to be careful not to bring that shade on, on individual teachers or, or broad brush a, a whole group.
Right.
Because of the one, it has negative outcomes.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't want to vilify teachers because that's not, they're, they're doing, like I said, phenomenal jobs across most of the time. And, and what they're doing and dealing with kids and 25 to 28 kids in a class a day. I mean, that, that's, you got a lot going on, right? And so I, again, I would just encourage everyone to just try to build that relationship and, and you'll know what your, your kids are learning.
Hundred percent, hundred percent become part of the problem. Gabe, one of the other phenomenal things that you, you guys did, and this is, this is significant. We, we live in a day and age where, you know, lawlessness is out of control. It's dangerous when our children leave and go to school. We don't know what's going to happen between that front porch till the end of the day, right? For, for numerous reasons. But, you know, there's been several school shootings throughout the nation. And it's always too late when it happens. But Kennewick, your school district did something phenomenal in terms of what you did in policy and what you guys were able to accomplish. Tell us a little bit about your security protocols that you took and significant changes that you've made to your school district that I think is, is a benchmark and is, and it's what we would call best practices in school security to protect our children.
Yeah. I gotta say, in the three years I've been on the board, this is probably one of the things I look back and I'm, I'm most proud of being able to accomplish. And just for a little background, so, so every year we go through active shooter training with, with KPD. And they invite us to the school as, as board director, directors and city council members and all that stuff can go and view this training. And three years ago, I was there with Chief Guerrero and we got to talk in. And, you know, every time we talked to him, I'm like, what do you think about arming teachers? What do you think about this stuff, right? Because it's, it's a topic. And we both kind of had a good discussion and it was like, you know, I'm, I, I could be in favor of that. But if a teacher had to do that, the, the mental piece of it, right? Like if you had to do that as an armed teacher. So anyways, based on that discussion, we decided that we were going to put retired law enforcement in all of our elementary schools and ensure that we have active law enforcement in our middle and high schools. And so through the community and the levy that we passed, we took funds from that to create this program. And so now in all of our high school and middle schools, we have an active duty KPD officer in there. And we're in the process of filling all of our elementary schools with school safety officers, retired law enforcement.
That's awesome.
Armed, commissioned, and, and that's their program. And so we're almost there staffing everyone. But again, staffing, you want to make sure you hire the right person. And so we really want those folks that connect with kids.
Yeah.
That can be mentors, that can show law enforcement in a positive light.
Absolutely.
You may have some kids in the schools whose only experience is watching their dad or mom or cousin or brother being taken away to jail or whatever, and they don't quite understand. So we want those officers to be, or those, those school safety officers to be a positive mentor to these kids. And I, I've been there when the kids come to school and the officers outside and they're high-fiving and handshaking and all. And it's been phenomenal. And on top of that, this program has, we've already seen success with it. And I'll give you one example. Our officers in the elementary school, they have the same walkies that KPD does. So when the call comes through, they're hearing it just as the officers are. So there's no lag time between KPD getting ahold of our school safety officer. So one example, which, which was amazing is there was a gentleman walking down one of the streets by our elementary schools and had a machete and was screaming and yelling. Call came through on the radio. Our school safety officer went right outside, right, right by the front door. Eyes on, watched this gentleman until KPD actually responded and, and dealt with it. They did a, you know, modified lockdown. He was there. But that's just that peace of mind, knowing that, that that program is working is, is amazing. And I wish, I wish our legislators would get it together and, and pass something to, to fund all the districts like that. Because it's, it is so important.
It's, it's benchmarking. I mean, it's, you, you guys are showing and demonstrating it can be done. Because the conversation, many people have talked about this. Why are we not hiring former military?
Right.
Former law enforcement, people who have been trained professionally have done that. I mean, we have, you know, in all branches of the military where people have gone through military police training in some form or fashion. If that's what they did for a career, well, then certainly they, they know, let's put them through some training. And, and you said it, they're trained, they're equipped to do the job. And something that was missing for so many years is elementary schools weren't protected. It was middle school and high schools that always got, had those school resource officers, because that's what the program felt that.
Right.
Need, but not our most, I don't wanna say our most precious, all of our children are precious, but the 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 youngest, uh, most vulnerable. If if all of our children were in, are are in danger. So I I think I applaud you guys for that. This is, it's amazing.
Yeah, it's it's been great. And yeah, to your point, our, you know, we look at some of the worst tragedies we've had in schools and that they involve elementary schools because the kids there just aren't protected. And so, you know, that's, that's been a great thing for us. And um, we're gonna continue that program, obviously, and and hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have everyone staffed in all the elementary schools. Um, and uh, yeah, and it's, it's been great. So and K KPD has been phenomenal partner in in that with us. And so I I think that's the other critical piece to this. And wherever you're at, whatever city it may be, that partnership with local law enforcement to be able to help do this is is critical. So if your area hates police or whatever is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We don't want that. And and they probably, again, they they know the law enforcement officers who have been retired, who are retiring.
Yeah.
Right? And they wanna do something part time. Wh- what a perfect opportunity.
And this works great with, uh, my understanding is this works great with their retirement and all that. Like, it's a win win for everyone.
Yeah, see, it can be done, folks. It could be done. They're doing it. So I'm gonna check for for questions here just to see if if something's popped up um since. So I, we see someone, um, this is Shivam who said, uh, question, would you advocate for for Dave Riker to do something like this? Well, well, certainly, we would advocate for any candidate running for office to adapt sound um education policy or any policy to advance academic excellence for our children and protecting our children. Um, a hundred percent. So this is something, again, this is non-political. This is, this is common sense discussion about what we can do to better our our school system for our children. And and that's what we're talking about today. This, this is, this is wonderful. Um, so Gabe, in terms of academic excellence, you know, we we still have um schools that are struggling to have, well, people say, well, on the west side, we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough money. And we have um a broken funding model.
Yes.
Right? Um, I think it's the prototypical model is what it's, what it's called. And most people don't understand how it works. But I'll I'll give the folks who are listening an understanding that it's, it's a model that will say, it uses a ratio and and it's almost like a mysterious ratio.
Yeah.
You know, it's like one point two five administrators per six hundred students, um, high school students. It's based off of school FTE or school enrollment, student enrollment. So the more students who are enrolled in a specific school will determine how many school professionals can be hired or funded by the state. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. And that I, my understanding too is that also um you got programs that the schools are running too that are essentially kinda passed through, right? So you have, like locally, you have Running Start here at CBC. So these kids are just passing, the funding's just kinda passing through the school district and and being paid to to others. And so this is the model, I don't, I don't believe the model picks them up as full time, right? They're picking them up as as smaller portions and and such. And so, yeah, the the model's not great. Um, and and I I don't think the model for any of, for sped.
Yes.
For um uh MSOC, ma- maintenance services and operations, all all that stuff is is underfunded.
And right.
We should have the the money to to do that, right?
Agreed, agreed. And so the reason I wanted to bring this up, because a lot of times people will, a- again, they won't support um the concept of funding schools because they, they're so focused on the fact that, you know, we have poor academic, you know, um, I guess.
Results.
Outcomes or results. But at the same time, we we do have to understand, and most don't understand, that the funding system for schools, as much as we are paying, it's, it's broken.
Correct.
The model is actually broken. And and that that prototypical model, if you think about that, think about rural areas or 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 small communities and rural areas that don't have large schools.
Right, yeah.
That that need funding and support, that don't have the money for special education programs. Um, and and of course, we have special needs children everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, in all communities. And so this is something I wanted people to understand.
Yeah, and I I think another uh piece to the funding people need to understand is school budgets are already made up of eighty to eighty five percent. That money is gone, right? It's going to salaries, benefits, and and that's it, right? So so now a school district's working on fifteen, twenty percent of funding that they they can have for some of these additional, additional programs and what. Um, but just for an example, so the state is funding Kennewick, our district, at our, at a ratio of about sixty six thousand dollars per teacher.
Mm hmm.
Right? Not, not bad. However, we in Kennewick have a pretty tenured staff.
Yeah.
Excellent teachers, average salaries, probably eighty six thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, we're missing, right? So we've gotta come up with that, that money somewhere. So money that we have to come up with to cover the gap in the funding.
Yeah.
Pulls away from some of these other things that that we wanna do that that can, you know, ultimately help our, help our kids or or bring in other staff like paras and support help to really help these kids, especially our kids that that need that one on one. You know.
Yeah.
We're doing, doing our best that we can with with the funding we're getting.
A hundred percent. And our paras are often forgotten.
Yes.
And you know, amazing, uh, our paras are amazing. Well, all of our, 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 our staff, um, really. But when you have special needs students and that the goal is to to ensure that transition at some point in time to general education from special education to general education, and then you have that that teacher. You have one teacher in there often, and and that one teacher is dealing with special needs children. They're, they're dealing with general education children, and they're dealing with behavioral issues.
Correct.
You know, coming out of COVID, right? That isolate, that isolation of children, so many things, so many factors. I I again, I want parents to get involved, to get more engaged in their school district so that they understand what is going on with, how their school district is being ran, how they're using their budget, and then what's going on in the classroom. And it's not to weaponize, it's not to attack the administrator or attack the teacher, but to have a better understanding and and then bring accountability. Or you may find that the 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 recipe is more support.
Right.
In this classroom than accountability, because maybe the accountability's there, maybe that teacher needs more support. Or maybe that administrator needs a little bit more support to get a, a capital budget or 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 I'm saying, not a capital budget, but a levy, right? Um, for security, cause I think a security can be brought in under.
Right.
Right? As a small capital budget for security on a levy, correct?
Yeah.
So there's things you you don't know until you know.
Yeah, and and I would, I would even say like, for me, partner with your school district, right? It's not to be adversarial or anything, right? I've learned so much in three years on the board that I just had no clue of.
Yeah.
As as a parent.
Yeah.
And and how things work.
Yeah.
And so partnering with your, with your school teacher, your school administrators, come to the board meetings and and just be out there and understanding what's going on and ask, and ask questions. But again, when you build that relationship, th- then you can get stuff going and 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 working. And um, that's, we're all here, we all want our kids to be successful, whether, whether we're teaching them, we're parents, whatever, whatever it is. We want all our kids to grow up and be productive members of society and give them the resources they need. And so sometimes it's just about partnering and being resourceful and how we do that.
Hundred percent. So what is your one recommendation, um, again, to schools? In terms of, and this is, this is generic, maybe difficult. I don't, I know where I'm gonna go with this. The goal should always be academic excellence and and achieving that. One, one of the things, I I won't name names. I, there's an amazing superintendent. He was a friend of mine. And I don't wanna out him because I I I've really, he's a superintendent, a new superintendent within the our near region of a smaller s- uh, school district. And he's always, I, he's been a good man. I saw his kindness, his heart, and I'm so glad he got promoted. I was running, you know, for 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 governor at that time. I never got a chance to tell him how proud I was of him. But he and I worked together on a, on a tutoring program to to help bring that program forward to to make up for that lost learning um during the COVID, um, uh, the pandemic i- issues and the shutdown of our schools, which again, I was very much against. Um, but it was a step to to take action to to fill those gaps, those learning gaps. What would you recommend right now, I I guess, to fix that, that, the broken? Well, I don't wanna say the bad numbers, but the fact that we're not performing to those standards. What what are your thoughts on that?
If I could wave a magic wand.
Yes.
I honestly, we are so bogged down in the schools with just minutia and paperwork and this and that. If if I could wave a magic wand, we'd get rid of all of that and our teachers could focus on math, reading, writing, science, those key uh subjects.
Yeah.
But we we get pushed down so much.
Yes.
Garbage and filler that, that we just can't, we can't, it it takes up so much time, right? You think, and and then if I could wave that a little bit harder, I would hopefully try to fix the discipline issue.
Yes.
Discipline is such a big piece in that right now in classrooms, right? You have one, fortunately, you have one child with discipline issues. And and rather than take that child and deal with the discipline issue and remove that child from the classroom and go that way, you know, sometimes we gotta take, you know, and all of a sudden, we gotta take the twenty nine other kids out of the classroom and and let the, you know, let the one child have their tantrum in the class and whatnot. And so if I could, if I had a magic wand, if I was Chris Reichtal for a day, which I would not want to be.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would get rid of the minutia, the, the, all the extra stuff that is being pushed down and and focus on discipline. And and that's, that's really what we're focusing on this year is is discipline.
Outstanding.
Because we've, we've gotta figure it out. Uh, we we need our administrators and our teachers to know that we support them in disciplining um kids. And and from a parent's perspective, w- we need your help.
Yes.
And and those things as well, right?
And hundred percent.
And being supportive. So if I could do something, it'd be, it'd be those.
Well, you you had it right there. I mean, so I'm, I'm gonna agree a hundred percent. And and there's no equivocation in that because I think those are the the two key factors. I I and a curriculum focus on, on the curriculum. The 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 fundamentals of education, right? English, language, arts, mathematics, science, the the basics. Because if a child can't read, a child can't do math, a child can't do science. And so, you know, I do support scientific approach to 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 reading, right? To, right, um, structured literacy. I, you know, there's things that we can do, that we should be doing. I I think we should have state legislature that that mandates school districts um support, you know, letters training for for teachers so that we can bring those programs in. Um, there's so much. And and again, you hit that nail on the head also with behavioral issues. Gabe, as I traveled all over the state over that, over this last year and a half, two years, behavioral issues are the number one detractors, distractors within a classroom and those teachers. So they're getting hammered. Again, you have special needs children and you have general education children. And then you have behavioral issues within that, that environment within a classroom. And it's just you and and you know, your heart's in the right place. And I've seen teachers come out of a classroom in tears. We need to give teachers back their classroom and the resources and the support that they need to do their job.
Yeah, and you're, and you're, and you're a general ed teacher.
Yeah.
And you've got behavior, and you've got general ed students, and you've got sped students.
Yes.
And and now you're dealing with with all three and you're, you're trying to, and on top of that, you you look at the class, you've got such different levels of um basic understanding of things and and progress, right? You may have, you may be a fourth grade teacher, and you may have a kid that reads at second grade level and a kid that reads at seventh. And so now you've got this huge learning gap.
Yes.
That you're trying to teach to as well. It it's, it's, it's hard.
And it is.
They, we need the resources uh to help. One of the, one of the things I've always been um a big proponent of is our, our, our kids need to be on grade level reading.
Yes.
By by third grade.
Yes.
If if they're not there, it's, it's gonna be a struggle. And and I wish, we have a fantastic program in Kennewick, uh, Team Read. We have volunteers that read with our kids and do all these things. I love the program. I'd love to expand it to every school. But we need our kids to be able to just to read by by third grade or else we're, we're putting them behind and then we're just, okay.
It's, it's crucial.
Yeah.
It it is, it's crucial because I, again, you know, we, I I gave you guys that hint, if anybody ever wants to Google it. You know, I, I want, my daughter's gonna be a psychologist, so I'm kinda happy about that. Um, but but it's, it's how children develop. And and that's that crucial and critical age, right? Or timeframe of their lives, of their cognitive development where they must. Um, otherwise, they're behind the curb and they're gonna struggle. And it's, it's almost like that, if if you, if you're in a, you know, a formation run, as we used to say in the military and that. And and if someone in the, in the, in the front starts to sprint, it's gonna be an accordion effect. And then they slow down and the person in the back is getting killed, right? It's cause like they're speeding up, they're slowing down, they're speeding up. But the person in the front is good because they're just running at their own pace. But the person, it it's, you just lose, you lose students academically. So we need to focus on that. And you're right, we need to bring those resources. I I send, give teachers back their classrooms.
Yeah.
And someone made a comment, phonics, phonics, phonics. And Gina, you're a hundred, a hundred percent right. You know, with a scientific approach to to literacy or to reading, you know, phonics, syn- syntax, um, um, all, all that comes into play. Um, so no.
Yeah.
I I agree. Someone said, what is behavioral issues? Um, so what is behavioral issues are stemming? I'm gonna read it as it's written, stemming from the fact that the kids aren't learning or can't learn the way ah they're being expected to, oh, Lisa, a hundred percent. And so, you know, I I used to, I wanna say brag that I was a high school dropout. And and the reason I was so upfront about that, it's, you know, it was, it's nothing that to really brag about per se, but I made up for lost ground. Um, I consider myself an academic. But that was, I was a perfect example of that. I learned differently. And I don't wanna say I was slower, I was bored in school. And so I was easily distracted in school. And I just needed more time or I needed, you know, a little bit more attention. And so I didn't get that. And so I, again, went off and probably distracting other kids, you know? I I was a good kid. But I I agree. And so one of the things I believe in in Gabe is, you know, some people will 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 call it um UDL, universal de- um, um, universal design for learning framework.
Right.
Right? And and it could be used different ways, but but psychologically, the concept of understanding how every child learns.
Yeah.
So that we can meet that child or that child is academically, right? And then bring those unique resources. It's almost like um, um, an IEP, an individual education plan that we use for our special needs children, but something similar for for all children, but that requires resources.
Right.
Uh, to make that happen.
Yeah, and that goes to the fact that, again, you, when you just look at the makeup of everything, you, you have one teacher.
Yes.
With anywhere from twenty to thirty kids, right?
Yes.
And they, and they have to do their best to teach each, each kid who's at completely different levels.
Yeah.
And um, it it, it's just, it's tough right now.
It is.
In the classroom. And um, like I said, the, the big piece is, is getting, getting rid of a lot of that other filler stuff that happens. And and get back to teaching. And when we do that, that'll give us time to to get into some of these things and and really help.
I I I agree. And so, you know, I I think that would be the true justification. And you know, whether people wanna talk about this history and that history and all these nuanced changes, let's just value everyone.
Right.
For for who they are, who they wanna be, okay. But the fundamentals of 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 academics, the fundamentals of education, every child deserves a quality education and it must start and end with those, those fundamentals.
Yes.
If we cannot deliver on that, what good is all the other programs that that special interests are trying to bring into our schools? And and again, this is not me and certainly not you either being against anyone or any groups. It's to say, if we cannot do this, w- we will not further our children's futures by equipping them for their future.
Right, right.
And and so.
Yeah, and I mean, you just, you could look at other countries and their education and it's, you know, these kids are doing these crazy things in elementary school ages and, you know, we're.
Yeah, we're behind.
We're, we're behind.
This is America.
Yeah.
You know, the leader of the free world, you know, the most powerful nation in the world, we should be the leader. We should be the, the center of academic excellence of the world.
Yep.
And I think it's because of our mindset towards education, we we have, as you say, I'm, I'm gonna say it, we have diluted academics. We have diluted academics with these detractors, these distractors. And we have to pull them out. We need to focus on our children. And we have to pull them out. We need to focus on our children and remember what is our mission.
Right, yeah.
And and zero in on that.
Yeah, and you can focus on all the children without continually adding these these individualized.
Yes.
Things into the classroom, right?
Yes.
You don't, you don't have to add in this one particular curriculum for one group and one for another group, right?
No.
Every kid deserves an education. Every kid, we need to give them the basic education so they can be successful. But when you start going here and there, you're you're just. You're taking more time out of the day, and these classrooms are run on the minute.
Oh, they are.
You, I mean, I've been in tons of classrooms, and it's like, okay, it's ten forty-five, we have to switch from reading to math. And oh, it's eleven oh seven, now we're, we have to leave to go out to lunch. Like, minute to minute is is planned throughout the whole day and and a lot of it.
It it is. They don't have the time to teach what they should be teaching.
Right.
And and every class, I'm I believe every classroom deserves to have dual educators. You know, I think a a teacher and a para, a teacher and a para is a is a perfect balance for every class. And you know, there's a time where people said, well, we we didn't have as many students at one point in time, maybe we need to cut staff. No, you know, take advantage of that opportunity to make up for lost learning.
Yeah.
Right? That's, but again, it comes down to funding. It comes down to, so it's like the chicken or the egg thing. And so that's why I'm encouraging parents to to get involved. Have an understanding of what the needs are for your school district and your school. Find out where you can be of support and help. And if there's a problem, again, then take a position from an educated position. Don't just say. Bad classroom or bad school or bad school district, know what you're talking about, because you may find great teacher. Great principal, they need help, they need your support. And 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 now that you understand how that prototype. Prototypical model works or doesn't work because it's broken, then you say, well, we are spending billions of dollars in education. We're getting terrible results, but it's like, how can we fix it if we don't have the funds to fix it? But then, so there's so many different things. Um, and then now is gonna be a time for me to advocate for, um, a candidate for, this is not you doing it, it's me. Advocating for David Olson, who's running for the Office of Superintendent for Public Instruction, um, right now. And and I think he'd be. Um, I guess a a person who can get in there and bring change. One of the things that David did, um, in his school district was, you know, the cell phone.
Right.
Thing, right? Because of the distractors, uh, that cell phones are, you know, so many young people and us older people too now. Look at us, we're like all this with our cell phones. It's gotta be within, you know, hands reach. And so now where they collect those phones, right? Or or they they're available for emergencies. But you're there to focus, or they they turn them off.
Right.
I think that's what they're doing.
I think that's what they do.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, it's a great, a great policy. And I I know in Kennewick specifically, we we have a similar policy. Um, phones in lockers and and those kind of things. And there were some news that Kennewick kind of, Kennewick High School kind of tightened their policy up. And they're really pushing it. It is, it's it's a distraction.
Yeah.
Uh, how many videos are you seeing of fights and bullying and all that? Also, I mean, it's just, it's not needed, right? And and I know parents get concerned because, hey, I need to reach my kids. Or what what about in a, you know, a situation where they need to reach me? Well, that that's true. That could happen. I would also say, like, if heaven forbid, there was a active shooter or something, and now you're calling your kid nonstop, the phone's ringing. Like, I mean, like, there's there's pros and cons, uh, to it. And, um, I just think it it is a distraction in the class. So if we can find that balance. That real good balance of of having it, not having it on and stuff, I think is is gonna be, uh, key. And and, um. Yeah, and I think one of the things, um, that's been great with, uh, since we've, at least since I've been on the board, a lot of directors across the state. Have now been kind of getting to know each other a little bit more outside of your region and through WASDA and those things. And, um, you know, I've had the chance to meet, uh, David personally, great guy, um, great conversations and, um. There's a lot of, there's a lot of directors around here trying to make change in their district. And and that's been a fun piece to to see that. And, uh, one thing that most people probably aren't aware of is is WASDA.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right? And WASDA is a big thing for school directors, and they have a lot of, uh, power in the in the state, right? And so one of the, one of the awesome things that we did as school board directors is we got rid of the weighted vote.
Yes.
And so this will be the, this will really be the first year that we have the ability to do that. And so, uh, for for those who are listening with with WASDA. What had been happening in the past up until last year is a a policy proposal or an amendment or some some position would come up.
Mm-hmm.
And all the, all the conservative directors would be like, uh, don't pass that or pass it.
Yeah.
And then five of the big school districts, Seattle, Snohomish, all those, they would say, they would say. Uh, let, no, we want to call for a weighted vote.
Yeah.
And then what happens? Well, then they vote opposite of this, the smaller school districts. Well, guess what? Bellevue's votes cancel out Kennewick, Richland and Pasco.
Absolutely.
So now Bellevue's just canceled all of us out. And so now we don't have a say, right?
Yeah.
And so we've changed that now. So now it's a one for one. So we have as much weight as Bellevue, Seattle and those things. And so now when we go to vote on policy positions, and this is another thing that I feel strongly about as a school board director, that all the, all these school districts. Should be getting together within their local, uh, board and coming up with their positions.
Yes.
And that's available.
Mm-hmm.
So in Kennewick, in the next three months, we're gonna have all our positions that we're gonna vote on at WASDA. And our folks can, they'll be able to see them and who, which board director said yes, no, where where we're at. Because again, it's it's about transparency.
That's it.
But you should see some of these policies and amendments and things that people are are putting out there. You'd 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 be surprised.
Well, you've you've seen them. Oh, I have. And so folks, just to give everybody an 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 understanding, um, it's our general assembly. And I was the legislative representative for our school just when I was in the board. And I was there, and I think, well, Gabe, you were, you, you were.
Been there.
You were there. Um, and so there was a vote, um, on a resolution. And the resolution, our parents, the primary stakeholders in their children's education. And that resolution passed on a, well, I guess the the count, the vote count. Based on, right, on the first. And then they went to a weighted vote in which the bigger school districts had more votes. Based on the weighted vote, and they overturned it. Well, troublemakers like yours truly. Um, uh, utilize Robert's rules, right? And we were able to get, um, a review of that. To bring more information, and we utilized the fact that the, um, FBI had labeled, you know, parents as domestic terrorists. Uh, you know, based on the the national, uh, what was the?
The National School Board.
School Board Directors Association. And so, and that to take such a vote to isolate parents from their children's education. Would have adverse effects on this assembly for taking such a, what I would call a terrible vote. And so we did a revote and it passed.
Yeah.
But that, yeah. And so that is, that is why what you said was such an amazing thing that that weighted vote is gone now. So those large school, uh, school, uh, districts cannot squash on the voice of smaller.
Right.
School districts. And so.
Yeah, cuz you, there's, I I think when I looked at it at one point, there's nineteen or twenty rural districts.
Yeah.
That wouldn't even have canceled out Seattle's school districts.
No, no.
Right? And what you can say whatever you want, they've got whatever, forty thousand students, there's only ten, like, whatever. But again, it comes down to. You gotta represent your your community.
Yes.
And you you shouldn't get extra votes just because there there's more students.
Because there's more students. And and you said it beautifully, and this is important for people to understand who are listening. The more involved you are in your schools, um. And knowing who you are voting for for those school director positions, that that is key. Because those school board directors, they represent you. And and I'm gonna say this, and I'll look for questions before we we, um, close out. Because we're getting close. We have a few minutes left. You know, I'm biased. Um, Gabe is not only my friend, we've known each other for years. Um, and but I'm listening to you, Gabe, and. Your objective, your common sense, nothing, you know, nothing political, no- nothing isolating, no- nothing. It's just what is best for children, what makes sense. That's what we need, but it's it starts with citizens getting involved. Citizens getting engaged and ensuring that we put folks like you in office. And Kennewick is one of those school districts that I I believe you guys, you know, have the citizens. Of that school district have continued over the last several years to get more engaged and ensure. That their voices were being heard through the directors that they were voting for and putting in office. Am I correct in in saying that?
Correct.
And so now you guys have the position where you can bring more common sense professionals. To represent the citizens of that community. And Seattle is one, Bellevue's one. Richland's one, um, Colfax is, I mean, but every community is different. And I think it's twenty-eight alpha dot one fifty dot two thirty is the RCW that 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 guides the left and right limits of a school board. And it says the unique characteristics of the communities.
Right.
And so the school board members should reflect the unique characteristics of those communities. In service to those citizens of those communities.
Yeah, and their and their values, right?
And their values.
What is your community values? And and you should know that when you're voting for someone into, uh, a school director, any position, right? You should know their values. And and again, the school director position is nonpartisan. You don't say what you what you are. But at the end of the day, my values and my my character is not gonna change.
Yeah.
And so if you get to know that.
Yeah.
Then then if it aligns with you, great, vote for me. If it if it doesn't, then then you won't vote for me.
That's it.
That's that's where you need, you need to know, cuz you want people who are gonna represent you. Uh, and you want people who are gonna, who are gonna push back when they need to because it doesn't align with the community.
A hundred percent, and well said.
Yeah, and that and that and that happens more more often than not with with, uh, OSPI.
Oh, I, oh, okay, we're seeing that. We're we're seeing that. So, um, Gabe, I'm gonna give you the the last word. Um, um, we've gone through the questions that we had. Um, actually, we have one more. And Lisa has one, I just want to say, let me see, um, and Lisa, I'm gonna make sure I get this, different levels, just to teach each child. No, I I think we we caught that. So we we did, we we did catch that. But, um, with that being said, with that being said. Um, what else would you add? And I gotta say this. So David did say something, let me see. Best place to come, um, after the Trump, uh, town hall. Um, oh, we love you. Thank you, uh, David, thank you very much. It was a compliment. I'm gonna take that. Um, thank you, brother. And and so, you know, to tonight and today was about education and visiting with my friend. Um, someone who I'm proud, um, to bring on to our our first guest.
Yes.
Of our series of guests. Um, we want to wake people up. We want people to to take a common sense approach to engaging. And their communities, because this is the path to self-governance when we are participating. Not from the cheap seats, not from the couch, just calling names or saying our schools are terrible. Well, get involved in your school and find out what's going on and be part of the change. Gabe, what is your 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 last word? What what do you say, my brother?
I I would say, um, we've talked about it a little bit, but but get involved. I think that's the key piece.
Yeah.
Uh, everybody's been woken up to what's going on.
Yeah.
And and get involved. I I I'm just a dad.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, I I'm just a dad, and I know my board members are dads and moms, and we're all just. Wanting to be involved and to make change that's best for all of our kids in the community.
Yeah.
Uh, not any certain groups, anything. We have nineteen thousand students in the district. We want what's best for for all of them. And I I would just encourage anyone listening, get involved, stop letting everyone else just pick and choose. And and all the the powerful people just slide into these positions.
Yeah.
Take your community back, be a voice of your community. And and it's, you know, it's ti- it's time. So whether you can run and and get elected. Maybe not, but can you go and be on a local committee at your school? Can you ask questions? Can you share information with people? Absolutely. And please, please do it. Get involved.
Yeah.
For far too long, we've, we collectively as parents have sat on the sidelines and just, we've we've let, uh. We've let education kind of shift lanes and we need to pull it back.
We do. Our children need us.
They do.
And and you said it. It does.
They do.
We're not gonna let, you know, elitist or anybody else. It doesn't, it's not about about your bank account. It doesn't matter whether you have a title or not. It's everyday people, dads, moms, um, get involved. We need you. Go to those school board meetings. Um, get involved.
We love that. We love people coming to the school.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. You can speak, you can share your anything, right? You get your time to speak. So, um, if you have questions, anything. Bring them up. Let us know. Talk to your school board. Make sure that you're doing your part, cuz at the end of the day, if you're not.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna get what you get.
Yeah.
And don't throw a fit.
What a great way to support you guys for the great things that you've done. Um, Gabe, thanks for being in the show. Um, we'll talk more. I know this won't be the last we're gonna hear from you, brother, but thank you. God bless you, and we'll we'll talk again soon.
Thank you so much.
Brother, thank you.